It's four thirty P M. So we'll start with a roll call.
All right, absolutely. President Abbas.
Present.
Vice President Martin is excused. Alder Carter. I see you here, Alder Carter. Yeah, yeah, we can't hear you, but she, for the record, she is here. Alder Bennett is running late. Alder Harrington McKinney. Also running late. Alder Heck.
Here.
Alder Lemmer.
Here.
And Alder Weheli. Alder, for the record, Alder Weheli is here.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, fantastic. We have quorum.
Thank you very much. We will start with approval of the minutes. Can we please have a motion?
Move adoption. Can you hear me?
We can hear you loud and clear. Thank you.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any question, concerns on the, on the minutes? I will consider it as unanimous approval. Next, we will move to public comments. Madeline, I just checked. I don't think so. We have any public comment. Correct?
No, we do not have anyone registered for public comment at this point in time, but we do have an individual registered for agenda item number six.
Perfect. Let's move forward with the disclosures and recusal. Anybody wish to disclose or accuse? That's your opportunity. I do not see any hand raised. If it's okay with the body, we would like to take agenda item number five and six as a first as a discussion, and then we will go back to the presentation and update. If there is no objection, then we will move forward with the number five. I do not see any hand raised. So can agenda item number five, legislative file number six nine two three five, creating section two point zero five of the Madison General Ordinance to specify procedures related to consent agenda. Can we please have a motion?
Move adoption.
Adoption, can we? We have motion, adoption, second. Questions for the staff, perhaps Alder Weheli? Would you like to speak to your ordinance?
Yes, President Abbas, thank you. So basically what this ordinance is, is to specify procedures for consent agenda, creation, exclusion, and considerations. From my so far experience, there has been a lot of haphazard, you know, during the, on Tuesday, having items from exclusions and the staff are so much bothered with the request to exclude items. Sometimes staff are not available at the end of the evening to answer those questions. So basically what it says is no later than noon on the day of common council meeting, and Alder may request exclusion of any agenda item from the consent agenda for meeting by notifying the common council staff in writing. Prior to the council meeting, common council staff shall create and circulate a consent agenda document identifying public hearing items and recommendation items, required super majority votes, additional recommendations and exclusions requested by noon on the day of the common council meeting. The consent agenda document shall be distributed to Alders and the mayor and made available to the public. So this will be more of transparency and if people want to attend during the meeting for exclusion, this will be an opportunity to see which items are excluded. Additional agenda item may be excluded from the floor from the consent agenda by request of Alder at the common council meeting. All items excluded from the consent agenda shall be considered separately. And all department heads or the designee of the city agency responsible for the subject matter implementation of proposal, including on this, on the meeting, agenda shall be in attendance and available to respond to any questions. Like I said, you know, sometimes items is excluded and there's no city staff who can be able to answer to those questions. So this will give us an opportunity for staff to participate in those agenda items that has been excluded. And then finally, proposal. I think that's it all. Yeah, yeah, that's, that's all I have. And, you know, you can read the, the full entirety of the ordinance, which is attached. So this is basically, yeah. More process and more transparency and more streamlining, easier work for the common council office, but also staff to be prepared to answer those questions as they are excluded. So, thank you.
Thanks, Alder Weheli.
Any questions?
Appreciate that. Any questions from the staff? Or any comments? Aldo Fermin, please go ahead.
Thank you, Council President. I guess this question would be for Attorney Haas. Just want to be clear, I appreciate very much any opportunity that we take to codify stuff, but what if anything is different from the current procedure that takes place now? Besides, obviously, smartly and goodly codifying it.
I think it's largely consistent with the current practice. I think the one difference might be the directive to make the consent agenda document available to the public. We've had some conversations internally about how that would work. It may require making the consent agenda a numbered item on the agenda so we can link to the consent agenda document. I, my understanding was always, you know, that the expectation was that there would be agency staff available to answer questions. I'm not, I'm not sure the mayor could, I guess, add if that's been a directive, but that would be codified as a directive from the council. And I think that my understanding, again, maybe Madeline can chime in, but I'm not sure if there was always a noon deadline, or if it was just that the noon deadline has sort of been slipping as far as requests for exclusions. And I think this would give the council staff some support to say this is a deadline, we're not going to send out multiple consent agenda documents in the afternoon while we also have to be prepared for the C C E C meeting.
Thank you. That's very helpful. I appreciate it.
Aldo Fermin, Aldo Carter.
Yes. I'm trying to think who do I want to direct my question to, but it's my understanding that because of, I think this is a great ordinance just to really not only for transparency, but I think it's also great for the staff. My question is, is that and staff can answer this when staff is should be talking, but there's many times when the consent agenda comes out late and staff is doesn't think that they're going to be excluded. So I do want to get some input from staff, but that doesn't have to be right now.
All right, if.
I think Madeline has, oh, okay, go ahead. You're the president. Go ahead, President DeDante.
That's fine. I was just gonna say if Tony has or Madeline. Guys can respond now, or you can take that offline as well.
I would be happy to talk to Alder Carter further offline if she's interested.
Perfect. Appreciate that. Thank you very much. Aldo McKinney.
I'll wait until the discussion on the vote. I'll withdraw.
All right. If there is no further questions, we will go in and comment. Anybody have Aldo McKinney, do you want to comment or discuss at this point?
Yes. I the reason that I am supporting this clarity is that on several occasions, I was dealing with what I thought was an updated consent agenda operating on the latest consent agenda that I thought I had, only to get to the conference, only to get to the council and discover that it had been updated late later. And so that was very frustrating because I find myself, I found myself speaking on something that had been updated. And so there needs to be clear support of to council staff that this is the cutoff and it could be consistent. So I'm supporting it from that standpoint. And secondly, I recall having a question to staff and the staff was not present. And because the staff was not present, I did not get my question answered. And the response was, well, this has been before the council so many times, there's no need to have staff input. And so that was very frustrating to me because I did not get my, my question answered. And so as, as much as we can have clarity and understanding and consistency in the process, it makes confusion less, less, less complex. And so I thank the Alder for recognizing that and having clearly defined processes that we can all follow. And when it's not followed, we have a basis for identifying that lapse. So, so yes, I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Aldo McKinney. There is a motion, there is a second. If there's no objection, I will consider it as unanimous vote. I do not see any hand raised, so I will consider it. Weheli?
I'm sorry, I, sorry, after the item, maybe I can speak because I have an event. I'm outside, so I would like to.
Please go ahead. Go ahead.
No, I don't have to say anything. I just want you to finish what you have to say then. After the motion, then I will leave the meeting because I have another event at the Madison.
Thank you for letting us know. Yeah, there's already motion, there's a second and the motion is approved because it's unanimous consent. I don't see any hand raised, so I will consider it as approved. Thank you very much, Alder Weheli, for being here. We will move forward to the next agenda item, agenda item number six, legislative file number six nine two seven one, amending section two point zero four one and two point two nine of Madison General Ordinance is to change the order of business and procedure for registered speaker. We have a one party spent on agenda item number six, Paul Nordner in opposition and wish to speak. Paul is here.
It looks like he's not present with us.
All right. Then we will move forward with the motion. Can we please have a motion? Aldo Carter, you did move motion to adoption. I know you are muted. You're still muted.
Move adoption.
All right, it's adopted. Alder Lemmer, that's second from you.
Yes, second.
Thank you. It's moved and seconded. Could, would the sponsor would like to speak on the ordinance?
Thank you, President Abbas. Yeah, so this item is, came out of the T F O G S implementation work group really as a proposal to try and improve a common council meeting. We talked about a number of different options, really looked at the recommendations that came out of the original T F O G S report, some of the other suggestions that had come out from different sources about things that we could do to just improve overall flow of the meetings. And the one that we landed on was to recommend a change in the order of business. Primarily, what this does is moves all public comment up to the beginning of the meeting. So basically, it would, it would happen during what is today the early public comment section. So after the honoring resolutions and after the consent agenda, when we normally would go to early public comment, we would actually take all public comment at that time. The, the proposal would have comments taken sort of item by item for anybody that's, that's registered. So we would, you know, take all comments on, on a given item. There'd be an opportunity to ask registrants questions on that item. Then we'd move on to the next item and so forth until we completed public comment for, for all items on the agenda. And then we'd proceed with the meeting as we normally would. You know, the, the primary benefit of this is that it really brings a lot more. It's, it's, it's much more predictable for members of the public to know that they show up, you know, at or around six forty five. And as soon as we get there, they can say their bit and then they don't have to stay around until eleven o'clock or one in the morning, you know, if, if we're waiting to get to their item. So that's really the, the primary change that this puts forward. It also just updates some of the language in the person's right to address common council section, mostly just to align with the same. And one other change is that it removes the suspension of the rules as like, as a standing order of business. And the intent there is that we will actually, you've worked a lot with Attorney Haas on this one, and today we, we kind of do that general suspension of all the rules at every meeting. And I think a lot of us have been confused about what we're actually suspending for what items. And in many cases, we're suspending rules that don't actually exist for items. And so the intent with taking that out would be, we would actually just be with suspend rules for any items that needed it at the time that we take that item up. So that's the other sort of small addition that goes along with this ordinance change. Happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Aldo Foster. Any question for the staff or for the sponsor? Aldo Carter. Aldo Carter, we cannot hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Good gravy. I'm looking at this and under D C you have early public comment. And then next to it, you have presentation of the consent agenda. Did I hear you correctly that we're getting rid of early public comment because now all public comments are actually early?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay. And then after that, starting with G, is that the regular meeting then?
Starting with G. Yeah, I mean, pretty much everything else from there is, I mean, there's a little bit of cleanup just because they had, we had presentation of consent agenda, special order, public hearings, a special order, and those don't really do anything since they will just, the, the consent agenda is just moved up right after honoring resolutions. So there's really no need to call it out as a special order of business because it would just, you know, it basically would happen at the same time. We just didn't need to call it out with a, with a specific time. Except we never really, we don't stop doing honoring resolutions to jump to the consent agenda. We just do that once we're done with the honoring resolution. So yeah, everything else from there basically remains the same.
Okay, thank you.
I guess actually one thing that worth calling out is this also doesn't differentiate between public hearings from public comment on other items. So it really, you know, kind of similar to the change that we made recently where both public hearing items or public comment items have the same time limit per speaker, the three minutes. This also doesn't, it, it doesn't, it doesn't pull the public hearing items separately. They're just taken in order that however they're on the agenda. And public comments accepted on all of them, whether they're, they're listed as a public hearing or simply public comment for another item.
And did, I just have one more question because one of the things that we tend to have is someone will talk their three minutes and then it has to come back to the common council to grant an extra minute. Is this being addressed or no?
No, I mean, that's pretty much, yeah, just nothing's changed with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? I do not see any hand raised. Any comments? Aldo McKinney, do you wish to speak?
No, I just want to register my, my vote.
Okay. Well, if there is no comments, I would like, if there is any objection to record unanimous, unanimous vote, please raise your hand. Aldo McKinney, your vote is in opposition.
Correct.
Right. With that, I will Aldo Carter as well. Why not we do a roll call vote? Sorry, Aldo Carter, you're muted. Madeline, can you do a roll call vote?
Yes, absolutely. President Abbas.
Aye.
Vice President Martin is excused. Alder Bennett is not present. Alder Harrington McKinney.
Reg to me as a no.
All right. Alder Heck.
Aye.
Alder Lemmer.
Aye.
And Alder Weheli is also excused. Point of order, Alder Carter is listed as an alternate. Will she be voting on this item? All right, sorry about that. Alder Carter.
I'm just abstaining. I have extra questions, but not enough to stop this from going forward. Thank you.
Okay, then with a vote of three to one, the ayes have it and the motion for approval passes.
Thank you very much. We will move forward to a presentation on Housing Forward Plan. I believe, Madam Mayor, you are here. Would you like to take a lead from you?
Thank you, President Abbas. I appreciate it. Yes, I did jump in and jump out when you guys changed the order of your agenda. I, I thought it was perhaps past time for us to come back to, to C C E C and, and give you all a little bit of an update on where we're at with Housing Forward. And I will very shortly turn it over to Matt Walker, but I just wanted to start with thanks, with, with two bits of thanks. And the first is a very sincere thank you to the council for your ongoing support of housing and affordable housing work in the city. I, you know, we have consistently increased our support for funding affordable housing. We've consistently expanded the ways in which we're working on housing and affordable housing. And we wouldn't have been able to get as far as we have on the Housing Forward agenda without the support of the council. So I'm very grateful to all of you for that. And secondly, I just have to say huge thanks to the staff who have taken up each and every one of these things and spent time working on them and move them forward and are still coming up with yet more ways for us to increase the amount of housing and particularly affordable housing that we're creating here in Madison. And I don't have to, to explain to any of you how critical this work is for our city. We are still in a housing crisis and our need to continue to, to keep our energy and our focus here. But I'm very pleased that we do have a lot of really good progress to report. And to do that, I will turn it over to Matt.
Thank you. I also have Lynette Rhodes and Jim O'Keefe here who can chime in anytime, say something that is incorrect. But I will re-saying that. So I'm just gonna give a brief sort of overview of Housing Forward, kind of where, where we've been and sort of what is next. So just to start off with, you know, for the last decade, staff across P C D, really across the city have written a number of reports really digging into data and strategies and best practices on the creation of all kinds of housing with particular focus on affordable housing. And this is a body of work that, you know, adds up to well over a thousand pages and has over one hundred sort of concrete recommendations of things the city should be doing. And over that time, we implemented a lot of them. So we created committees, we created new funding streams, R F Ps to go after tax credit housing, we created, we, we increased our production of affordable housing about tenfold on an annual basis over this period. And we dug into, to creating permanent supportive housing, which is housing for really our most vulnerable populations with services attached. So that was all happening, you know, over the last decade. Our sort of standard funding programs between homeless services, creating rental housing, funding section eight, creating home ownership opportunities adds up to, in our budget, to tens of millions of dollars that we were pushing out on, on an annual basis in the broader sort of housing space. But then in, in early twenty twenty, based on feedback from council, from Housing Strategy Committee, from the mayor's office, we took a step back and read through all of those thousands of pages and dug through those hundreds of recommendations to really try and distill things down into a more sort of succinct, concrete set of things that we could do to move forward in housing in general. And these five sort of categories cover that. And so the first two, increase housing choice and create affordable housing throughout the city are really about creating opportunities so that there are types of housing, sizes of housing, price points of housing, and really serve everyone in our community in every part of the city. Banning displacement segregation and ensuring that seniors others can stay in their homes are making sure that like I said, that people can stay where they are and that we're preserving those opportunities so that people are not pushed out of, of housing that they have. And then the last one, working to end homelessness is really finding solutions for, for people who our housing market is just not working for at all. And each of these have very sort of, just very succinct set of policies underneath them that we've been working towards. So over the course of twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, an increased housing choice, a lot of this is about the rules that we set. And so the sit-in technical thing mostly in the zoning code. So you made changes to allow for more housing be built as a permitted use, including accessory dwelling units. And then creating new zoning designations to allow for greater density in places that are, that are. that are, that are changing. That's what this regional mixed use designation is for. And then we're in the middle of proactively rezoning areas of the city where we've done a plan. We want to make sure that underlying zoning allows that plan to be implemented. As far as creating affordable housing, this is a lot about how we use our funding tools that I talked about. Um, so we have increased the size of the Affordable Housing Fund, but then we actually dug into the, the actual nuts and bolts of that RFP to make sure that we're really emphasizing things that would hurt our important, such as being on transit, making sure that we're serving the very lowest income, um, households, and that that affordability period stretches even longer. So we've made those changes in the RFP. Um, we also created a land banking fund, and then that land banking fund grew so that we can go out, acquire land and control it to make sure that the housing that gets built meets city goals. Um, and then we've also simplified the permit process to, to demolish housing, uh, to, sorry, to demolish buildings to allow affordable housing to be created. Um, and right now, we're in the middle of working with, um, Change Lab, which is a national nonprofit focused on housing. Um, and we've put together a team that has city staff, um, UW faculty, and, um, nonprofit housing providers to really look at what more can we do that is allowable under current, um, Wisconsin state law. Um, and so some of the successes of those funding programs are, are really just, this is a map of where our affordable housing fund has, has gone. Um, so you can see it's really spread all over the city. And you look at the numbers, um, you know, our pipeline of unit production is about 2,000 units with over 1,500 of them being affordable, um, which is a pretty significant number. Um, when you look at how much housing we were producing in the past, um, for comparison, our entire public housing portfolio, it was built over the course of 30 years, is only 900 units. So this is a, a really robust production pipeline that we've created, um, for affordable housing. Um, as far as, um, commanding displacement segregation, um, you know, this is really digging into making sure that we've got solutions for very, um, specific groups of, of, of people oftentimes. And so the first thing we do is create the Housing Forward application process, which focuses on, um, smaller scale, um, housing products that serve specific populations. Um, and then we created that in 2020, and then in this year's budget, it was doubled. Um, also in the process of creating this small-scale development loan program, to again, help with these smaller projects that pop up through the course of the year. And then, um, we're part of a broader, um, technical assistance program to really look into how we can create homeownership opportunities for, um, for people of color within the city. Um, and so for, this is just, uh, a sampling of what is funded through that, um, Housing Forward RFP. So you can see it covers things like land trusts, down payment assistance, um, digging into, um, uh, help make home repairs for existing homeowners, um, as well as creating cooperative housing. So again, a wide variety of housing funding types and models, um, that serve really specific needs, um, are funded through that RFP. Um, and ensuring that people can stay in their homes. So, uh, we have a, we create a partnership between Building Inspection and Civil Rights to really get at, um, tenant landlord issues that are related to retaliation and strengthening our toolkit there. Um, because of COVID, uh, we were, you know, the recipients of all this emergency rental assistance money, which took up, uh, obviously a lot of time over the last two years and it's a lot of money. Uh, we also increased our eviction defense fund, um, as well as bulking up those rehabilitation loan and property tax, um, programs. So all these are just designed to, to help keep people in their, in their housing through legal means or by making it more affordable for them to stay there. Um, and so Dinkor, for example, is, is that, um, emergency rental assistance program. So between us and the county, that's almost $15 million that were pushed through these programs. Um, Dinkor Two is the, the follow-up to that, which is again, another 12 plus million dollars involving, um, a variety of community partners. Um, and so this is just continuing to happen as we're pushing this money out to, to solve these, these challenges. Um, and then working on homelessness. So this is a combination of rule changes, um, projects, partnerships, um, because it is such a challenge. It takes all these tools working together. Um, so the first item on here is, again, in that Affordable Housing Fund, when we do these tax credit developments, we're really, um, pushing to partner service providers, um, who target these really vulnerable populations, including homeless individuals, to get them into supportive units in those tax credit developments. Um, we have worked hard on, on creating a new men's shelter as well as, uh, women and family shelter, putting funding towards it, but also countless staff hours to identify sites and work with partners on it. Um, we've created this variety of new zoning districts to allow for a variety of housing type solutions, um, that sit somewhere between our traditional shelter and other housing options. Um, and then we created, um, the temporary campground on Dairy Drive to, again, support more people. Um, and we're in the middle of working with OM Village, um, to, uh, add renewable energy options to their site to, again, reduce costs. Um, so, sorry. So, so Dairy Drive, I'm sure you're all very familiar with and have had multiple conversations. Um, on the southeast side, there was an article in the paper just this weekend talking about, um, how that is, uh, is continuing to, to work and, um, and when we look on the horizon as to what's next, um, on the zoning front, there's an, there's still more sort of technical changes, specifically in, in the case of low-density neighborhoods, single-family neighborhoods of changes that we can make. Um, on the flip side, we're looking at, uh, transit-oriented, um, overlay in zoning to allow for more intense development along transit corridors. But related to that, we're also looking at how we can make tweaks to all of our funding processes, funding programs to support more development along those corridors. Um, things like land banking fund or TIP or affordable housing funds are all being looked at in that same sort of transit-oriented context. Um, on the affordable housing funding side, um, and we'll just, affordable housing in general, uh, we're looking at ways to streamline permitting, which again, we have to make sure it complies with state law. Um, but the Housing Forward funding process for 2022, I believe, went out today. Um, and so that's out on the street. And then we're looking really hard at our portfolio of housing. So, homeowners have the Triangle and Teresa Terrace are slated for redevelopment, but along the way, those are likely to, um, add more units, not less, as they are redeveloped. And then on the homelessness side, um, again, moving forward on both of those, uh, shelter solutions, and then working with our, our partners, um, to continue to provide, you know, target units with supportive services. So these are all things that are, you know, sort of on the immediate horizon for staff to be working on. And that is where we are with Housing Forward.
Thank you, Matt. I appreciate the update. I'm sure Matt would answer questions if folks have them. President Abbas?
Thank you very much, Matt. I have one quick question about the overlap statistic with the transportation. Uh, do you know the timeline and the process?
Um, I should know both of those because we've had many meetings, but I'm just not remembering off the top of my head. Um, we have a staff team working on draft items or that, which I think, I think they've already scheduled as to when they're going to go to, um, TC with some of those things. We also were the recipient of a federal grant that is helping us make sure we coordinate the overlay with, um, public safety improvements, with our funding processes, with marketing. And so there's a broader staffing that's making sure that all those things work together. Um, but I can get back to you on the timeline. I know Heather told me just last week.
But it's, it's on the order of months.
Uh, yes, exactly.
In, in regarding identifying the areas, it's, it's going to be on a BRT route? It's going to be all the transportation routes regardless of BRT? Uh, I just want to understand geographically which area you guys are targeting.
Sure. So, so BRT is clearly the first focus, but it's with eyes wide open. We have a metro redesign and future BRT routes, and so those are being paid attention to at, at the same time. Um, but I think that is a question is, uh, when, what, what is the trigger for it? Is it when that's imminent or once we kind of know the route? Those are details that are, I mean, talked about right now.
But I think ultimately, Alder, yes, it, and any high-frequency routes.
Thank you.
Aldo Foster?
Yeah, just wanted to, uh, try and help with that question as well. It, um, President Abbas, it was at Plan Commission twice, um, for, uh, two sort of special meetings, and then it's been at the Transportation Policy and Planning Board. So there's definitely, and maybe, um, Madeline or somebody could help find the Legisstar stuff and send it out, but I think there's video recordings and some materials that folks could take a look at as a starting point.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Thank you very much. Um, Matt, I am very, very pleased with the direction that you presented here tonight. Um, I have been one of the skeptics of, of, you know, where the city was going in terms of making sure that there were checks and balances in the housing format and accountability, but I'm, I'm really encouraged by what I'm hearing tonight. Um, there were some bumps in the road, um, but it, it really appears that, um, you're on a good course to make some good solid decisions. And, um, so whenever this housing goes up, it'll be sustainable, it'll be, um, successful, it'll be a successful model. And so I just want to acknowledge I was one of the naysayers, um, but I, I want to, uh, come on board, and I'm really pleased with the direction that we're moving in and the accountability and all that I see. And so, um, I think that Tree Lane was a disaster when it first started, but we've learned some things and you're operating on those things that you learned. So thank you very much, and I appreciate, uh, the effort that you've, uh, put forward. And I just wanted to put that in the space.
And I appreciate that. And, and I, I want to take, you know, definitely a good chunk of the blame for how over the last 18 months, this probably wasn't communicated as well as it could be. Instead of moving all, you know, 30 of these items at the same time, they came in fits and spurts. And, um, the, the truth is that now that a lot of these are, are out there, a lot of these items do work together. For example, at Teresa Terrace, um, given the, the zoning changes, we're going to be able to quickly demolish the existing empty housing, put back more, uh, slightly more density by right. We have a funding source, um, you know, in hand. So all of those will work together to create a new type of affordable housing in, in less time and hopefully less staff hours. Um, but each one of those changes on its own helped a little. It's when they all work together is that when, I think we can achieve a lot of better outcomes. So moving forward, I think we're, as staff, going to try to make sure that we communicate how the package works, um, as much as we do like the individual little change.
Thank you, Alder. Uh, Alder Carter?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. So Matt, just got a couple of questions. Is this, um, the housing, um, plan, is that a combination of what the city would build and possibly, uh, developers that are in the affordable housing stream would build? So a combination of both? And then my second question is, um, you mentioned homeownership. So do we have a program for first-time home buyers?
So, yeah, so Housing Forward intentionally was sort of stepped back to this higher level to look at what's being, what's, what's happening in the private sector.
Okay.
The profits, what are we funding? What are we doing? Tries to cover all of that, um, get the bigger picture. And then homeownership, for example, is one of those cases too, where we're trying to make sure that we open up opportunities for, for things like townhouses, a different housing type. Then we're also funding nonprofits to do some of that, but in some cases, we're going to look at, say, the CDAs portfolio.
Mm-hmm.
That ourselves. Um, there's no magic bullets. You kind of have to do it all.
There sure isn't. Thank you very much. Good presentation.
Thank you, Alder Carter. Alder Evers?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Matt, you and I have talked about this before, how in Austin, uh, there are very substantial investments in public transit. Um, the transportation investment is a whopping $71 billion, but they've set 300 million, uh, aside for anti-displacement programs. Their concept of a transit overlay is recognizing that, uh, as, as a more efficient public transit investments go forward, it's going to increase the property values of all those parcels proximate to transit. And that will, that will cause problems with gentrification, the displacement. Do you see that this overlay could also, that we would try to source some kind of fund to be able to push back on, uh, and, and provide residents in these areas means of being able to stay in their homes, uh, while the property values continue to rise all around them?
So I guess sort of two parts to that. Um, so yes, we are looking at specifically on these transit corridors, making sure we have a land banking strategy, TIP strategy, and affordable housing funding strategy that makes sure that we, if either do preservation or creation of affordable housing along those corridors, we're, we're right. Like you just run the risk of increased gentrification of people being pushed out. On the flip side, we have looked at a number of models that talk specifically about, um, what can you do with an existing homeowner who has rising home values and property taxes, and doing it in the context of Wisconsin state law that really ties our hands with the hot, you know, we can't give a property tax discount or treat them differently. And so we have talked to the city of Milwaukee, who has launched a program in partnership with the private sector, but mostly led by the private sector to help do some of that. So that is, that is on our radar, and we're actively looking at how to thread that needle to, to create options that, that are legal in Wisconsin.
Thanks. I assume, uh, you know, I don't know what the comparable amount of money that we would want to set aside if Austin can afford to do 300 million, if we should be looking at 30 million or 50 million or what, you know, and how we would generate those kind of revenues, whether it be some kind of affordable housing bonds or, or some borrowing capacity, but it's something to consider. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Uh, Alders, Foster and Carter, I think your hands are still up from previously. Uh, but Ald, Aldo Foster, go ahead. Another question. Yeah.
Um, yeah, I did have one question actually. No, no, it's great. Um, and, and thank you, Matt, for that. I think it's really helpful to see the, the breadth of all of that. And I think, you know, we've got a good strategy. Um, you know, we've talked about the, the potential of, you know, federal monies, um, sort of coming through and, and sort of the, the scale, the difference that could make through these, some of these different channels, including CDA, et cetera. Can you, what's sort of the latest update on that? And, I mean, I know it's sort of trying to predict the future, but, um, I mean, yeah, what are your overall feelings? Like, can you just give folks a sense of the, kind of the difference that that money would make?
Sure. So, um, in, in the proposed Build Back Better legislation, um, a lot of the focus is on just taking existing programs and, and amping them up. So for example, um, CDA administers 1,800 housing choice vouchers. If the amount of money they're talking about pushing into housing choice vouchers and Build Back Better happen, we would add something like seven or 800 vouchers. So that's a, I mean, that's a huge increase for us to just absorb all at once. Look at CDVG or Home or these federal funding sources, it's, you know, 50% increases, 80% increases, um, that we would just sort of see immediately and be able to push out the door. Um, there's also proposed to be a number of technical changes in things like the tax credit program. It just make those, it, it makes more tax credits and those tax credits go farther. And these, these are things that are easy to do because it's just taking existing program and, you know, changing a few lines in a budget, I guess, to simplify things. Um, what we don't know is if Build Back Better, you know, will end up going through in some form through budget reconciliation, um, and then how much gets whittled away. I haven't read anything that sort of indicates that, you know, that housing stuff is being targeted on the chopping block, but I don't want to, it's hard for me to sort of handicap what, what. what Sender Mansion or Cinema are going to do and vote for. But, I mean, just, I guess, to go back to where you started, these are in order of magnitude higher increases in funding than we've seen in decades in these programs, where they have been flatlined for, you know, 20 years. So it's exciting on the staff side to think about these new resources that are possible, you know, to be coming through HUD to really grow the things that we're good at doing.
Yeah, that's, that's great. Thank you for sharing that. And I'll just, you know, echo, I think, what Alder Evers was saying is that I, I mean, I think we, hopefully all acknowledge there's a real crisis in housing. I mean, we are working so hard on it, all of us. I do think we, it would be great to know what a stretch goal is for us as a city, right? And maybe, you know, maybe there's three options, like do what we're doing, which is already quite awesome, and then, you know, what are those increments that could make a big difference? And ideally, we can get that funding through, you know, the federal government. But also, like, either way, I think we need to put it out there to the community. And, you know, even if we need to ask for contributions from those that have more in our community, I mean, I hear it's so clear that it's a priority for everybody. And I, you know, even if it means putting it out to RFRM or whatever it takes, I think, I think we should have a stretch goal for ourselves. And just really appreciate all the work that you and staff have put into helping, helping build the strategy for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Now we just need Congress to actually do something and build back better. So we can all keep our fingers crossed and continue our advocacy there. And I did want to add just one other piece, which Matt didn't touch on, and that is the role of the private sector in all of this. And I do want to acknowledge that there is a private sector-funded workforce housing fund that is, I think they're on their third or fourth project now that they've funded. And that's great news, right? That's another source of money into the market to get there to be more affordable housing, and really would like to see that continue and expand. But we are also now starting to have some conversations about how we can encourage and support large employers in the community to support workforce housing for their own employees. And there's plenty of examples around the country of employer-assisted housing programs. And so this is something that I would really like to explore here in Madison and work with our large employers to find solutions that work for them. I think there's a growing awareness that this is really an economic development issue for large employers and a workforce issue for them. And so I'm hopeful that we can get more action from the private sector to create affordable housing as well. So much more to come. And Matt gave a preview of some of it. I think there'll be even more, you know, in the days ahead. So, thank you very much, President Abbas, for the opportunity to share these updates. And we'll just keep forging ahead and certainly welcome the continued partnership around issues of housing.
Thank you very much. We will move forward with the update item, agenda item number three, legislative file number 69594, update items on the shelter at Dairy Drive Campsite. Jim O'Keefe, please take the floor.
I'll handle that, President Abbas, thank you. Just before, again, I want to just to mention that the use of the temporary shelter at First Street is at very, very high levels, consistently in the 140, 150-ish range. We've topped off at above 170 in recent weeks. Certainly, the cold has a lot to do with that. But that facility is functioning very well with few problems. And, you know, while our attention has been focused in other areas around homeless services in recent months, I think we should recognize that Porchlight has very quietly been doing very good work at that, out of the First Street facility. Would note further that the point-in-time count, the twice-annual count that we do once in January, once in July, was conducted last week. I identified fewer than 20 people unsheltered in Madison. It's remarkably low. It's a reflection of not just the shelter strategy, but other strategies that we've employed since then. But it was certainly heartening and welcome news to hear that last week. So, I've been asked to provide a brief update on the men's shelter. Of course, we're proceeding down twin tracks, one toward a temporary facility and another for the permanent site for shelter. And I know that most of your interest is in the latter. But I'm going to start with the former. Quick update about what's happening at Zire Road. City Engineering has begun preliminary evaluation of that property and its mechanical systems, finding them to be largely in good working order. They'll be addressing some minor issues at the property and then beginning, preparing to begin design work. And toward that end, engineering and CDD and Porchlight staff are scheduled soon to meet onsite and will begin to pick up the pace of those conversations. The preliminary schedule suggests about three months needed to complete the design work and secure plan approvals, and about another three months to complete renovation. We hope to be ready to move into that facility in late September or early October if we need to. My update is, as you might expect, is a bit briefer with respect to the permanent facility. The real estate team is wrapping up its site search evaluation, and we anticipate bringing a site recommendation and associated tasks and timeline to the mayor and the council for your consideration in the month of March, March of 2022, I might add. So, so those are my updates on the shelter. I can move into Dairy Drive, or I can pause here if people have questions.
So, Jim, why not we finish the whole presentation and then we can get back to questions?
All right. And quickly on Dairy Drive, Dean Mosman stole some of my thunder over the weekend with his story, which was marking the completion of the first two months of operation at that facility. So let me offer just a couple of highlights. The campground is, has been for a while now, fully operational. The service provider is fully staffed and fully engaged with campground users. The services that they are providing onsite include everything from property management functions, and they continue to work closely with city engineering's staff to troubleshoot as needed. There haven't been a lot of problems, but occasional. They're involved in providing counseling and mental health support, substance abuse or substance use assessments, rather, and treatment, de-escalation and conflict resolution. And they're heavily engaged, helping with housing services and housing searches. They're also working to meet basic needs of campground users, providing meals. About 1,600 meals have been donated to date, meeting basic supply needs, transportation, and so on. And staff there are coordinating a very, very generous response from the community for a variety of different donations. At present, I believe 27 of the 30 shelters are occupied with persons identified to move into the remaining cabins very soon. With respect to how it's going, the service provider, and we had our first post-opening meeting with the community last week. Service provider reports and did to them a high level of satisfaction from most campers. And at the meeting, support staff offered specific feedback and quotes, responses from campground users. The shelters have held up well through very high wind and low temperature conditions. The cabins are warm, even as campers note that the floors are cold. And again, these aren't, this isn't housing, but those structures are really functioning as well as we had hoped that they might. I'm also pleased to be able to report that to date, three people, now it's been two months, three people have moved out of the campground and into housing. And the service provider reports that two more are very closely, very close to following them. So remember, we have, we have discussed this, not as a place where people live, but as a resource that is available while the search for permanent housing has gone on. And we can, we can see in the early months that those have already been successful. Those efforts have already been successful. So, again, understanding that it's only been two months, and this is very much a period of transition, I think it's fair to say that the campground is off to a good start. There are issues that need to be addressed, and we will address them. There is a need for meeting space and storage space. That, especially the meeting space need, has been exacerbated or will soon be by the loss of the availability of the nearby fire station community room, which onsite staff have been using with support from Madison Fire Department. But a new recruit class is about, is about to begin training, and so the use of that facility is going to be more limited. We'll have some water drainage issues to address. The severity of that will depend upon how much snow we get and how we deal with it. But we know at least until the grass takes hold, that there'll be some water drainage that we'll need to deal with. The process of relationship building is an ongoing one, and we're paying particular attention to relations with surrounding residents, businesses, and property owners. I mentioned that we had our first community meeting since the facility opened last week. It was pretty well attended and I would say pretty well received. I do believe that for anybody that might be interested in taking in that presentation, that the video of that meeting is available. And I'll make a note to try to get the link to that video to members of the council. Lastly, there's a concerted effort to build strong working relationships between onsite staff and our colleagues in the Madison Police Department. So that, that effort is underway and will continue for as long as we think it's necessary. That's my update. Again, I'd be happy to answer questions on either of the two topics.
Jim, thank you very much for the update. I'm just curious, I know initially we did Warner Park Community Center as a temporary shelter, and it was a hard winter, all the Wisconsin winters are hard. We did not have such a amount of people, like 117, 145 on average. Do you know what are the cause of such a high? I know there are population, but is our outreach effort is getting better? To reach out to these people, encouraging them? I'm just trying to get sense, like.
Well, I think it's probably a function of a number of things. I think, I think it's likely that the number of people that are experiencing homelessness is likely on the rise, that's certainly the case around the country. And there's no reason to think that the situation in Madison would be any different. The First Street facility is a much more spacious facility, certainly, than the Basement of Grace Episcopal Church, and even more so than the Warner Park facility. It's very adequately staffed, it's been proven to be a safe venue. As, you know, there've been lots of concerns about the possibility of becoming infected with COVID-19. I think the, I think the level of services and the satisfaction of many of the users has probably influenced some folks who maybe in the past haven't used the facility to give it a try. And because the numbers tend to be steady, I think it's a pretty good indication that when, when people do try to take advantage of that resource, that many of them return as they need to.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Alda Foster? Sorry, Alda Heck, your head is next.
Thank you, President Abbas. Jim, you mentioned the count and that the number at the men's shelter is so large. And I'm, it makes me wonder about the women's shelter and the family shelter on Milwaukee. And, and, you know, with the pandemic and everything, we read and we hear from, from folks that there's probably a lot of families and women who are doubled up or elsewhere that aren't included in that count because they're not shelterless at the moment. Do you feel like those facilities are appropriate for the current need? Or is there a shortage there?
I think the facilities are appropriate to the current needs to the extent that there are very few families that find themselves unsheltered. And so you're absolutely right, Alda Heck, that, that the point-in-time counts don't, and most of the other formal counts that are, that are made, don't take into account situations like, like folks living doubled up. But as difficult as those, and possibly as unpleasant as some of those arrangements might be, they're certainly better than, than being on the streets. And so I think we are proving to have the capacity currently to provide shelter alternatives to families and to single women. The single women's shelter has been operating fairly consistently at or near capacity. But there have been, you know, few, if any, situations where they've, or occasions where they've had to turn folks away. So from that perspective, they're, they're meeting the current need.
Thanks, and just a quick follow-up, if I may. There's also the hotel component that's still absorbing different types of people in need, correct? Including the rooms that we secured as, at the same time as closing Rindell, as well as county efforts, right?
That's right, Alda. Dane County is supporting about 100 rooms in a local hotel, and the city, another 35 rooms. And those are over and above 70 rooms that are available at a, at a separate property, available to persons who are found to be infected with coronavirus or identified as close contacts to somebody who has been. So, you know, we've had surges over the past couple of months, but those facilities, again, have so far proven to be adequate, knock on wood.
So, sorry, one more quick question. And the funding for the hotel sites is currently through the summer, is that right?
Yes, both, both the city and the county plan to and have resources to continue those operations through June of 2022.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alda Heck, Alda Foster.
Thank you, Jim, for the update and for all the work. I know most of us, probably none of us, know everything that you and your team do. And it's, there's always, there are always folks that need more services. I just really want to appreciate everything that's happened. With the men's shelter utilization that you mentioned, the numbers, can you just remind us, like, what was sort of a capacity or average number, you know, back at Grace as opposed to, yeah, say Warner, and what, and what you're seeing right now?
Yeah, so it really is kind of a, a difficult comparison and one that we have to be careful about. And I'll explain why in just a second. But the numbers at Grace Episcopal Church and the two overflow facilities that were used in concert with, with Grace topped out at, right about that 170 mark. They hit that on just a couple of occasions during periods of very extreme weather. We've been consistently at or near that at First Street. The Warner Park facility, if my, if my memory serves me correctly, we hit, I think, 135 was the highest number of men served on any one night there. So, so this is, you know, this is all of what we have done at those two facilities and more. And what needs to be understood, and as we, as we, you know, discuss those numbers, is, as Alda Heck said, there are a good number of people, 130. is, as Alder Heck said, there are a good number of people, 135 or, or 140 or so that are, that are currently being sheltered in local hotel. At any point in time, there might be 25, 30, 35 more at that medical respite facility. And some of those, perhaps not all, but some of those, maybe many of those, are, are people who might otherwise be using the shelter resource. So it suggests that the, that the trend line, at least in the near term, near term, is, is seeing higher levels than, than what we had pre-pandemic.
Yeah, no, it's, that's helpful and good. I appreciate Alder Heck's questions around the women's and family shelters as well as part of that. On the other hand, are sort of the, the kind of larger scale informal encampments have, have shrunk generally? Is that right? What's the kind of the status on, on those?
Again, it's natural during this time of the year that the number of people who are unsheltered contracts. I don't recall ever seeing a number as low as the, the number that was reported from last week. I think the number was 15 or 16. Keep in mind, again, that, that does not include folks who are at the Dairy Drive campground, who might, in many cases, likely would be unsheltered. So at, at least for the moment, the, the numbers of people who are living outdoors, and certainly the concentrations are, are much lower than they were earlier in the year, and much lower than what we have seen in previous years. And likely, again, owing to the, the different alternatives that have been made available.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, that's, that's exactly the point. And so as you're, as you're sort of thinking about a permanent men's shelter, you know, I know, you and I have talked about sort of what, you know, what, what that could look like. The 135, you know, plus 65, so up to 200 rooms, that at least 135 ending in June. I mean, that's, any thoughts about what, what we're, how we're going to absorb that and how those don't just turn into, to unsheltered folks?
So we're, we're certainly mindful of, of not getting to the end of June with, with 35 rooms occupied at that hotel. And I hope and expect that the county feels the same way. So, so we are, as you know, providing onsite support services at the hotel, as is Dean County. And, and a big part of, of the, the point of, of the deployment of those resources is to help connect people to housing. So those, those efforts will continue right through the, the, the end of the period that we're there. I don't, I don't think it's realistic to expect that all, everybody that is at that facility today might find housing between now and the end of, of June. But we're going to do everything we can. And there's a, there's a significant resource commitment, trying to get as many folks into housing as possible.
Yeah, no, and I'll, I'll end here. But, I mean, I guess that's just something I think, I think we really need to, to focus on that piece of it. And, you know, it'd be good to try and get a sense of, of what additional sort of, you know, congregate men's shelter capacity would be taken up if other options aren't available versus, you know, where we really need to be looking at, at rooms, you know, for, for folks that, that's going to be, it's either going to be that or not. And when we're thinking about this future facility, you know, do we have perhaps a congregate shelter similar to the size we have now, and then try and have, you know, 100 rooms or something? So, and I know you're thinking about all those things, but it just really feels like, boy, if we could get a hotel right now, or, you know, create something different, it's hard for me to imagine the demand going away. Like, sure, we're actively working to work with folks, but new folks have issues. So I, you know, it seems like this, this feels like a, a number that we should be trying to figure out a steady solution for. And of course, things change. But yeah, just really appreciate all your work. And let's keep thinking about that, how we, how we find some, some more rooms on a more permanent basis. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder Foster. Alder Carter?
Jim, I just want to know what the capacity is, maximum capacity at First Street? And do we have an estimate of the maximum capacity at Zire Road?
Alder Carter, the capacity at, at First Street is comfortably, probably north of 200 to 225 men. Remember, we've, we made a, a change from Grace and from Warner Park when we stepped away from the use of bunks. And, and so if the need arose, you know, there's the capacity to expand the, the number of men that could be served at First Street very, very significantly. We don't think it's necessary. We don't, we don't expect to have to do that. But, but the, the capacity at that facility is, is fairly significant. And I, I think that, that with respect to Zire Road, some of the early design work that was done a year or more ago, when we thought that might be a permanent site, suggested that, that a comparable number of, of men could be served at that property. And so we're probably going to be setting up to serve, you know, up to 200 men there, and hope that we don't need that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further questions or comment? I do not see any hand raised. So thank you very much, Jim, for coming here and giving a detailed presentation. I appreciate that.
Thank you, and thanks for all your support.
With that, we will move next to agenda item number four, legislative file number six nine three seven four, poet laureate request, poetry recession schedule for 2022 common council meetings. Matt Lynn?
Yep, I can explain this. As far as I'm aware, this is just a procedural thing that has been done in the past when the poet laureate has a schedule they would like for council meetings. Last year, I think this unfortunately was missed due to my predecessor leaving, but we're bringing it back this year. So essentially, just feel free to vote on however you feel about this schedule, and I will let them know.
Thank you very much, Matt Lynn. Thanks for the good work. Appreciate that. We need a motion for approval.
Move approval?
Perfect. Move approval. Alder Lammert at second. Thank you. Any suggestion on the date or any concerns? All right. With that, I will consider as unanimous approval. Before we make a motion to adjourn, there are a couple of future agenda items. I, I also requested the mayor office to put another future agenda item about the craziness happening in the state assembly around the voting, and the removal of, you know, the, the Waukesha County give a verdict against the removal of the voting boxes. So there will be an update on that as well. If a CCC member or any common council order want to see any other agenda item or have any suggestions, please reach out to me. Thank you all. With that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Second by Alder Lammert. Thank you all. See you at 6:30.